Jesus Christ. Here's the law.
I don't like that simply dispatch. I'm having a hard time getting people. How much of those senses of Europe we find in the fridge?
True.
I like to have some names.
And we'll have it finally speed before getting there.
Shit, this is two oh eight. This is two, this is two oh seven. This is two oh nine.
The sixteenth, so it's the sixteenth, yeah.
Two oh nine, right there. Two oh seven. Two oh eight, two nine, two oh. Mm-hmm. Six.
So you have to go there after they close.
Yeah. I can work that.
One, two, three.
It's been brutal.
Yeah.
Who now?
That's what I gave you. I had to just accept.
Oh, well, yeah.
It's not just one either, it's a bunch of them.
Oh, he don't do it tonight. We're already done.
Unbelievable.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
It's time for us.
You know, everything I'm just gonna mention.
Yeah, I went to our six.
Tuesday, yes, it's coming Tuesday. And finally, three, it was sixteenth, five thirty. Yeah. Thank you. Okay.
Call the meeting and order if everybody please stand for the pledge and a moment of silent reflection, please.
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilman Eads?
Here.
Councilman McDaniel?
Here.
Councilman Hayes?
Present.
Councilman Hitt?
Here.
Councilwoman Traynor?
Councilman Norman?
Here.
Councilman Stahl?
Present.
President Peters?
Here.
Did everybody get a chance to take a look at the minutes from November twenty first meeting? Corrections or concerns during that? All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
At the same time. No public hearings tonight, uh, no communications or announcements. Audience concerns, we do have one. Uh, Tommy Boyd, please come up and state your name and address for the record, please.
All right. Good evening. Tom, Tommy Boyd, forty-eight North Union Street. A couple little things. Watching the video, very good. I can tell, definitely busy with the comprehensive plan and everything else going on. Um, tonight even, looks like lots of stuff, but first off, I wanted to go over one of the answers from November seventh for Michael Junior that came on in, talking about the excess funds in departments. Uh, just last year, you know, I'd like to bring it up again, that after discussing it with Kena about the excess in funds, the tax department was able to give away over three hundred thousand dollars back to the city that they didn't require us to put into their further salaries. So I think that was one great way to see how those excess funds can come back to the city. Uh, BPU didn't like it very much when I told them that, hey, way to get their money was increasing their rent price. But that's kind of gone now. I think you remember that one, Rich. But it's, you know, there are different ways, and it's nice that we've seen some of them and hopefully continue it. Uh, this is well, kind of from the last ones. Looking into the phase four growth, I did drive out there and, yeah, that thing's, whoo, I can't believe that many houses are back there already on Jacob Lane. Um, I was thinking for phase three, though, the outlet to fifty-six was going to be completed for them to go out that way also. Is that something for phase four that will be coming in then? Okay, 'cause, yep, lots of cars, and I know we've already seen a room full of people in here kind of upset about the amount of speed and traffic that's going down that road already. So just kind of looking into that after seeing it. Next one was, I'm happy to see several new sidewalks with handicap accessible ramps. I was seeing if I could just get a number on maybe how many we've gotten in this year and kind of how that whole project's going. A handful? I, I counted at least two or three that it kind of popped up.
Uh, I'm, I don't know the exact number. The contractor hasn't really reported what he has completed. He's gonna work as long as weather permits, and will continue after winter breaks, I mean, we get into spring again. Um, this is a, a grant that's taking care of this for us, and he's basically working with the county on getting that accomplished.
Okay.
But I can, I can probably reach out to him and find out. I would say we're probably somewhere in the neighborhood of ten to twelve, maybe.
Ten, twelve, yep. Hey, I mean, just kind of seeing them popping up, that's a big change from where we were, you know? Taking those little prices, that's a couple thousand dollars off a homeowner, to see these people not walking in streets pushing wheelchairs or whatever else it is. So thank you very much for that, just checking on in. Uh, a big one for me kind of recently was the sign going into fifty-six across from Cowling Park there saying twenty-five blinking all kinds of in your face. It's about a hundred yards in front of the twenty-five mile per hour zone, though. I was curious if that was put there for Old Fashioned Christmas or what's the point of having a twenty-five mile per hour blinking speed sign?
Because, no, we, we talked to Rich Hayes and, and all of us talked about it during safety and during public service uh, about the, the speed going, once you, once you go past basically Fifth Street.
Methodist Church there.
It seems like people open up and want to take off. So, uh, we asked that the police department bring that out there and kind of give people a warning that, you know, you're only supposed to be going twenty-five through here, not fifty-five, forty-five and all that. So that's why it's there.
But see, it's coming into town, though, is my other main thing is, 'cause I get, that's exactly what we've talked about. So I was, you know, gonna ask Councilwoman Traynor, unfortunately, about putting it in front of her place, you know, a little further, but on the other side, maybe going out that way, yeah. Slow that traffic by.
I'm sure we could swap sides, but at the.
If anything, it makes more sense.
At the time, you know, it was a, it was kind of both ways. You've got speeding coming through there, so.
It's just one of those, I want to trust those signs if it's gonna be blinking at me, but I can go thirty-seven by that, and there's not an issue. You know, and I know that, 'cause there's no twenty-five sign until then.
You hear, you hear what he's saying?
But, I mean, I'll ask right there, would you give me a ticket if you see thirty-seven blinking on that sign? No, he's, he can't, because it's not the speed limit. And so if you put it on the other side, though, there's no thirty-five sign before there, so you might be able to hold them off from going to thirty-five.
Gotcha.
So.
Well, now we know. Thank you.
Just to solidify those things. Um, last one kind of came up, last year was brought up, that people on Riley had requested a slow children at play sign. Uh, Rex, is there any way to get that sign put up for them? I know that once you get to the first intersection, there are no sidewalks until about maybe the last hundred feet, but.
You're talking about children at play?
Yep.
Uh, we've, we, I have done some research on that. The state in recommendations of signs recommends communities not put those kind of signs up. It could put us at a liability risk, because it gives the children and parents a false sense of security for them to play in the street and therefore put them in more harm's way. So we, we basically, the, um, I can't remember the acronym for this, the comp, the agency that controls signs, but they strictly state that we do not sell them nor recommend cities to put them in.
All right, so maybe that could be a good area to look into for the sidewalks, when we get that going and whatever else in our budgets to maybe start adding them, 'cause, yeah, over there, it's kind of spots here or there that you might have a sidewalk, but. Interesting response, but thank you for that finally, to kind of finalize that one. Other than that, you guys, I'm gonna get on home, get some dinner. I'll be watching for the rest of it, though. Have a good night. Thank you.
Have a good one.
Okay, on to, uh, committee reports. Greg?
Personnel Finance Committee has not met since the last meeting. Our next meeting will be on December sixteenth, five thirty, in the conference room next door. So that's December sixteenth, five thirty.
Brent?
Public Service, December tenth, five o'clock next door, and then Public Safety at six, same place.
Rich?
Uh, just reiterate, Public Safety Committee meeting, uh, Tuesday, the tenth, six P M., uh, conference room next door.
Andy?
I have nothing further.
John?
Nothing.
Michael?
Nada.
All right. On to city official reports.
Good evening. Thanks, everyone, for coming out tonight. I want to start off by thanking all the organizers, volunteers, businesses, and attendees of the historic downtown Old Fashioned Christmas. It was a wonderful event that was well-attended, and everyone really seemed to have a good time. Um, I've heard nothing but positive feedback from the event, which brought a lot of foot traffic to our downtown area. When I was down there, I did speak to a few business owners, and they were thrilled by the amount of business that they had. One of them even said it was the busiest day they've ever had downtown. So congrats to the team who put that event on, and they should all be very proud. I do want to thank everybody that came out for the mayor's sale at Shoe Sensation. That was the sale with the partnership of our office, London City Schools Raider Rack and a Shoe Sensation. Um, they will be given a donation to the schools so they can purchase brand-new shoes for those kids that really need them, especially at this time when it's starting to get really cold, and a nice new pair of shoes would be, uh, well-needed, so, um. All items out at the Raider Rack are brand-new, and they're free to students, and that's where students can feel more comfortable and feel confident wearing those new things. And they're identified by the teachers and by parents, and then are pulled aside without other people knowing and being able to go into the Raider Rack and shop. So if you weren't able to make it out to the mayor's sale, but you'd like to donate directly to the Raider Rack, just reach out to the school. Tonight, you have your second reading of Resolution two hundred dash twenty-four, which is OPBA, and that's the police union contracts. Once again, I want to thank the police department and our team for working well together to be able to come up with this contract. The contracts were presented to City Council on Monday, November eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, at nine twenty A M. via an email from myself. As we all know, and we've talked about this, union contracts need to be passed by City Council within thirty days of receiving the contracts. And this is the last scheduled City Council meeting before that thirty-day time period expires. If they are not passed by City Council, the contracts will ratify at that thirty-day mark. I am not sure what City Council's wishes are, but I'll just let you know that I've never seen City Council not support the employees and pass the contracts. If the legislation is unable to be suspended and passed tonight, or suspended and brought to a vote, I would suggest having a special meeting before December seventeenth. Just a suggestion. There are five pieces, new pieces of legislation tonight, which address a potential TIF, that's a tax incremental financing, and an NCA, which is a new community authority. I know that if you guys have looked at, have you guys looked at it? I know it is a lot of information, and I hope that if anyone had any questions, they were able to reach out to the administration, the law director, or the auditor with your questions. Our law director, Jennifer Hitt, did send an email on Monday, December second, at three forty-two P M. I hope you're able to look that over, which had a request for Resolution two oh six twenty-four. Being able to use these developmental tools like CRAs, TIFs, NCA's, JEDs, I think it just really shows our willingness to work with developers, grow London, and set the city up for even more success. There are some holiday events coming up around town. As this great holiday season approaches, Madison Health will be having their heartfelt holidays tomorrow. The Madison County Board of D D is having their holiday open house from nine A M. to one P M. tomorrow. If you've never been out there, it's pretty amazing the way they decorate each of those offices. Um, and then you have a chance to buy items that are made by people from the D D. The London Rotary Club is having their Santa breakfast this Saturday at the Madison County Senior Center from eight thirty to eleven. And then the Madison County Board of D D is having their Holiday Cabaret and Art Show on Wednesday, December eleventh, at six P M., and that'll be at London Christian Fellowship. Now on to the Molo Fun Fact, which is the number six seventy-eight. That is a total number of points London High School varsity football scored over fifteen-game season, which is an average of forty-five points a game. During that same time period, they held their opponents to an average of eight points a game. We all know they fell a little short making it to the Division III State Championship, but they did have an unbelievable season. They had an undefeated regular season, won the CBC Conference Championship, won the Division III Region Twelve championships, and made it to the Final Four, and was the last public school playing in our division. This London High School varsity football team is made up of great young men who is, who positively represent the school and the community on and off the field, and we cannot be more proud. So I just wanted to tell them, congratulations on a wonderful season.
Amen.
Hey, how about a round of applause? Yes, sir.
Rex, do you have anything?
Uh, just one thing. I know that it was, uh, questioned at the last council meeting about the crossing signals. Uh, we did finally get quotes in for that yesterday, um, and I'd like to bring that, uh, to further discuss it, both public service and public safety meetings Tuesday next week. So I'll have that information week in review. That's all I got.
Kennedy, you have anything? Okay, on to old business, up for a third rea, reading, Resolution one ninety-two dash twenty-four. Can I get motion read by title and number?
Make a motion.
Second.
Resolution one ninety-two twenty-four, a resolution authorizing the auditor to increase appropriations and transfer funds. The basketball courts and skate park need to be milled and.
Uh, this, so this is, um, appropriating seventy-five thousand dollars for milling and filling the basketball and skateboard park off of Walnut Street. This is the third reading, so, um, I'd make a motion to adopt this if there's no questions.
And this also, just additional, this also is from Mary Mack, too, I believe.
Yeah.
My second.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Okay, Resolution one ninety-two dash twenty-four is passed. On to ordinance one ninety-three dash twenty-four. Can I get motion read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution one ninety-three twenty-four, ordinance for strengths for job descriptions.
So this ordinance will do a few things. It's going to allow a supervisor on duty to be on duty at both fire stations on each day, each shift, with a very minimal cost. It's also gonna remove the references for employees of the water and sanitary, sorry, pardon me, sanitary sewer departments, which we no longer have. This is the third reading. I move that we adopt this.
Second.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Ordinance one ninety-three dash twenty-four is passed. On to ordinance one ninety-four dash twenty-four. Can I get motion read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance one ninety-four twenty-four, and ordinance, amending ordinance two thirty twenty-three to reflect a range of salaries of department heads and non-union personnel.
Since department heads and non-union personnel are not given raises automatically, this is a me-too action to allow those to have raises and thus be paid more than their employees. These raises are not guaranteed, so council has to decide the amount and take action, if any.
I make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. McNorman?
Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ordinance one ninety-four dash twenty-four is passed. On to Resolution one ninety-six dash twenty-four. Can I get motion read by title and number?
So moved.
Resolution one ninety-six twenty-four, a resolution adopting the recommendations of the Planning Commission.
Since Shannon's not here tonight, this is the, uh, for phase four of London Landing Brook's Edge. Still going to be a public hearing at the next council meeting, uh, December nineteenth.
And just to re-bring it up, this is the phase where we get the outlet to fifty-six, correct? Yes, thank you.
Any other discussion on this? On to Resolution one ninety-seven dash twenty-four. Can I get motion read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution one ninety-seven twenty-four, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a collection agreement with the Ohio Attorney General.
Just a moment. So currently, our tax department has the burden of trying to chase down those that are delinquent in their taxes. This will take the burden off of those in the tax department and the law director, and the attorney general's office already performs a service for other taxing authorities. If collections are unsuccessful, the attorney general can basically file, uh, the amount against any other returns they may get from state, and I believe federal refunds. Uh, the attorney general will be paid a percentage fee for the collections, so we're not paying anything upfront. I believe that percentage is ten percent of what they collect. Once again, this is the third reading. I move that we adopt.
Second.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
No.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Resolution one ninety-seven dash twenty-four is passed. On for a second reading, ordinance one ninety-eight dash twenty-four. Can I get motion read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance one ninety-eight twenty-four, an ordinance to make appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of London, State of Ohio, during the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
So this is the twenty twenty-five budget. Each member should have received that detailed report from the city auditor by now and had a chance to look at it. I encourage you still to look these over and ask the auditor any additional questions. She's here tonight. If you have additional questions you would like to ask tonight, um, this does not have to be passed tonight. We do have one more meeting before this, it does have the emergency clause, so with the next meeting, and if we pass it at that point, it will go into effect by that point. Uh, once again, I want to point out the two items that are in there that have been added is one hundred and thirty-five thousand to pay for pickleball courts and a hundred thousand to repair an existing salt barn at the street department. Both of these are basically capital improvement items, and if approved in this form, I believe they're gonna pre-approve the projects. However, if we remove these items, then they'll come to us to be approved within the capital budget. And each item can be debated, amended, and then actually can be taken at that time. The auditor is here tonight. If she has, if you have any questions that you'd like to ask her.
Do they have any questions for Kennedy?
Yeah, I'd like to make an amendment and take those both out, the pickleball courts and the, uh, salt barn.
You would, you, okay.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Yeah, you gotta speak.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to amend taking out the pickleball courts and the salt barn.
Is there a second?
I'll second. I'll second.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
No.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Mr. Norman?
No.
So, yeah, so it has been amended?
He had two notes.
What's that?
He had two notes in him.
Two notes, Norman and Hitt.
I'd like to make another motion that we put, uh, forty-five hundred dollars in there for the ambassador program.
What, what line are you gonna put that on, do you know? You don't, you don't know? I, I don't know.
In the Parks and Rec.
Put forty-five in for the ambassador program.
I'll second it.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Mr. Eads?
No.
All right, that amendment has passed. I don't know, I mean.
We, we got que, we just got questions. We, I'll let Ken ask.
Ask, go ahead.
So I don't know where we are at with developing this program, so what is this money going to? Is it below the line for expenses?
The Parks and Rec Department, for whatever they need for the background checks, for cameras, for whatever, promoting a park, just to get it kicked off.
So below the line, like in operating or miscellaneous, or?
Yeah, that'd work.
Okay.
I would think operation.
I'm sorry?
I would say operating.
For the purpose of the ambassador program.
Ambassador program.
Hive is?
No, sure.
They don't usually do it on the fly.
They're hive is, sure.
Well, we can, we can help a little more spend out on the next meeting, I guess, in the next.
Yeah.
It's gonna be a long meeting.
Well, if it's in the budget, it's gonna be.
Now, I have one more amendment, or motion for an amendment, to, uh, take the thirty-five thousand back down to twenty thousand. It was just for temporary, no need to double that a few months later for park security.
But you're not going to take it to one.
You got me confused.
Well, the, uh.
You want to take it back down?
For the park security, it was supposed to be temporary at twenty thousand dollars, and here, a few short months later, they're double, almost doubling it to thirty-five thousand.
That's a different, I mean, that's a different resolution and everything. That's further on down, 'cause I sponsored that resolution. So it's not in this budget yet.
It's not in the budget yet, okay.
So you can't amend it.
I believe these records will refer to the first time salary, that's fine, 'cause I increased it till now for that, we started it this year, this year for.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
And then so it's increased to an extra budget as well as that same line, based on the like, so everything should have.
So is it staying at twenty thousand in, like it was originally?
Wait. So, so just to be clear, you're asking that line to be decreased by fifteen thousand dollars?
If that thirty-five thousand is going for the park security, it wasn't, it was always supposed to be twenty.
And if that line is for all of our time, first of all.
Okay, all right, thanks. Okay.
Did you have a note, I don't have that in front of me, did you have a note on the side indicating that? What, um, what line? I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
It's buried.
Probably shot by, hang on a minute.
Yeah, I have an increase in a, till offer, we have all our pieces to resolve, and right in this plus park security, I don't know about.
Okay, 'cause I was seeing it as that twenty thousand for the park security was going to thirty-five. Okay, okay. Okay, okay, great, thanks.
You're welcome.
So does that mean you want to decrease that number by fifteen thousand dollars, or you want to leave it as it is?
I'd leave it as it is, yeah.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
No.
Um, no. Again, we don't, we don't have to vote on this tonight. It can come back to, we can discuss it again at finance, we can wait till the next meeting, or if council's wishes is to suspend the rules. I don't know if you're gonna have any other things that you're gonna want to do before the next meeting, but if council's wishes to suspend the rules, we could do that. Nope. Okay, I'm just bringing that up.
Well, I mean, we've made the amendments that you wanted, so do we really need to have another read?
Well, I'm just getting started. If I could, I'd decrease it all across the board by ten percent. Let me dig a little bit deeper.
All right.
Okay, on to Resolution two hundred dash twenty-four. Can I get motion read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution two hundred twenty-four, a resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into collective bargaining agreement between the City of London and the Ohio Patrolmen's Benevolent Association.
So once again, it's in. So once again, since Shannon's not here, before us tonight, as the mayor mentioned, this was emailed to council before the last meeting. Council members should have had a chance to read through this. The 30-day window for council to approve will pass before the next move, uh, pass before the next meeting. I haven't heard anything negative about this.
I'll make a motion, we suspend the three reading.
Second.
Okay.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel's?
No.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Make a motion? No. Held it down.
200-24 will stay on.
Council President Peters? Would City Council like to have a special meeting so we can pass this, or should I just wait for the 30 days to run out?
Can I, can I ask what the hesitation is, Mr. McDaniel, on passing this? What's your hesitation?
It hasn't had the three readings yet to begin with.
Well, the fire last, last week wasn't at the three readings. It, it's, it cannot go three readings. It's gonna pass no matter what, if you guys don't do anything, but it can't go three readings because of 30 days. That's what I've tried to explain at the.
Another two.
For the ASME, we suspended and passed. For fire, we suspended and passed, and this is the third one that needs suspended and passed, and that was what I've explained over the past three months about these contracts. It's in every single one of my mayor updates that contracts have to be ratified within 30 days of you guys being notified, and when I emailed you the contract after all the bargaining units signed off on it, that 30-day clock started.
Mr. President, I do believe that the other two contracts, we left on for a second reading, but at that point, we did suspend and pass, so the 30 days wouldn't end.
Correct, they were suspended after, on the second reading.
On the second reading, yes.
Yeah.
So.
You can reconsider.
Leaving it the way it is, on the 17th, it'll just automatically go into effect?
Oh, I believe it would be the 18th, but yeah, without, it'll, it'll go into effect without City Council support.
Support.
It's, uh, I've never seen that done. It says something.
Something.
There's always, you can always reconsider, a motion to reconsider.
Make a motion to reconsider it.
I'll second it.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel's?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Or motion to suspend, I'm sorry.
Second.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel's?
Yes, I guess, under protest.
Left that one on for the suspense, you left McDaniel's last, right?
Make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel's?
Yes.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Okay, Resolution 200-24 is passed. On to Resolution 201-24, can I get motion to read by title number?
So moved, second.
Resolution 201-24, a resolution declaring the official intent and reasonable expectation of the City of London on behalf of the State of Ohio to reimburse its stormwater utility fund 690 for the CKO-1AA, CKO-2AA, Third Ward Storm Sewer Improvements with the proceeds of tax-exempt debt of the State of Ohio.
Once again, since Ms. Trainor's playing hooky tonight, this is basically just so that we declare our intent to be reimbursed by the state, or asked to be reimbursed by the state, once the project is completed, project is approved by the state. So we'll be reimbursed any funds that was set aside. I was, wasn't that like $600,000 overall, I believe? I, I can't hear you.
$600,000, but this is to be reimbursed. It's just a new procedure that OPWC has implemented in order for us to do a draw and get, reimburse the funds that we've already paid for the project.
Okay, so we've already paid funds, this just reimburses us, and this is just saying we want reimbursed, basically?
Correct.
Correct? That's what I thought. Thank you for the clarification.
Is this time-sensitive at all?
Better, because we're, I have draws, and we've made payments and invoices that need to be submitted, and I can't submit them without this. They require this document uploaded prior to the next draw.
Make a motion to suspend the three reading. Second.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel's?
Yes.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Mr. Eads?
Yes, sir.
Mr. McDaniel's?
Yes.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Okay, Resolution 201-24 is passed. On to Resolution 205-24, can I get motion to read by title number?
So moved, second.
Resolution 205-24, a resolution increasing appropriations.
Uh, I'll let the auditor explain this.
Yes, turn that microphone on. Let's make sure we can hear you. I'm so glad you're here for this.
Welcome.
Is it on? Okay. So, the auditors have found that we were not documenting our health insurance coverage in a separate fund. So, in order to reconcile with that specific account, we need to document it in a separate fund. This is not changing how we currently do it, it's in addition to. So we'll also see the revenue of the $2.2 million as well as the expense. It's gonna be essentially an in and out. There may be a little overage, hopefully, if our plan goes well throughout the year. It is a state auditor requirement, so I would appreciate if you guys would consider suspending and passing it so that we can get our procedures and everything properly documented before we're ready to close out the month and the year.
So in this, as clarification, again, I'm glad you're here, the, this is on paper only, we're not really transferring $2.2 million, we've already paid that.
Correct.
But.
Yep, it's not taxpayer dollars, it's not funds being transferred out of any other fund or general, it's just documenting it in its own fund and reconciling with the bank account. Our TPA, the Third Party Administrator, currently writes all the checks, and so we've got to document that in the fund by itself.
Michael?
Sorry, I have to put my sunglasses on. These are prescription, by the way. I lost, I lost my other ones, my regular ones. So I want to be able, I want to be able to see you. So I have a question, and this is where I'm confused.
Sure.
It doesn't take a whole lot, but this confused me. So, we create this line, it's a new created line, it's line 800, and we're gonna put $2.2 million in there. And then, like, I sent you that email, and I asked you about deleting those other lines. So my question is, when, when you're coming down that budget line, you've got all of those healthcare costs up there, right? And then, those are gonna be added into the bottom. Is that 2.2 also gonna be added into the bottom? Aren't we kind of double?
So we're not transferring those funds from, we're not transferring the funds from those departments. It's still gonna be accounted for in each specific department for the employees who have our health insurance coverage.
But what I'm saying is, on the actual budget itself, we've got.
For next year or for this year? For this piece of legislation or next year?
Well, this will be for next year, correct?
Well, you're gonna increase the preparation so we can catch up this year.
For this year.
Correct.
This piece of legislation's for this year.
Correct. And it is in the budget for next year. It's in there for, obviously, for you guys to.
So what I'm not understanding is, the 2.2 that's gonna be in line 800 is paying for the healthcare insurance. That's also listed up on the individual departments, like the Rexes Department, the Mayor's Department, the Street Department. All of those have a line where there's a dollar amount that's being paid for healthcare. So, my question is, if you pay it out of that account, what are we paying out of the 2.2 account?
So currently, we pay, the, the lines that you guys are currently used to seeing are the premiums. So the employee pays 15%, it comes out of their salaries, so that's already on those salary expense lines. The city pays 85%, which is what is documented on the health insurance lines.
Right.
So currently, how we've been doing it wrong, the bank account we've not been reconciling with, because we don't write the checks out of, and that, that's an error from my office that we have to correct. So, the funds currently are transferred into that account, but we have to document all the checks now, which we have not done. That's a new procedure. And so what's docu, going to be documented in that 800 fund are the payments to the providers for all of the employees' healthcare.
Oh, wow, okay.
So it's a little bit differently. Currently, you see the expense as the premiums monthly. This will show the expenses of the dollar amount that's actually paid to the providers.
Got you. Okay, that makes, that, that makes sense. Thank you.
Perfect, you're very welcome.
But again, for the confusion, because there is confusion.
Sure.
The $2.2 million, it's gonna be shown as revenue somewhere.
In that fund. So it's an expense, because it's the premiums, but it's gonna be a revenue in that fund. So it's just everybody's premiums that we're paying into that pot to pay for providers.
But for this year, the 2.2, you're gonna show what's been paid.
The whole year.
As a revenue.
Correct.
And then, it's gonna come back out of the same fund.
Correct.
Okay.
Accounting, you gotta look.
That's.
Yes.
Clear as mine.
So does the company that pays providers, do they provide some kind of?
There's a check register.
Receipt or something that shows?
Yeah, I, I get a weekly check register of all the checks that they've written.
So we keep track of that, I guess?
Okay.
Can I ask, be devil's advocate, how, how come this didn't get taken care of in the first place?
Because we didn't write the checks, I didn't know that we had to reconcile with the accounting that the TPA was doing, because they're writing all of the checks. And so, for my office to know how to make it documented correctly, it was just something that was overlooked. We've been with this type of plan for four years, and even our previous auditors hadn't caught it. So, when the state, it's the states turned to do our audit this year, they found it, so.
Just wanna show nothing malicious or nothing?
Oh, no, no, no.
Just, okay.
It just has to be documented in a separate fund.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Well, I make a motion, we suspend the three reading rule, so we can get this.
Well, second.
Done.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel's?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Mr. Eads?
Yes, sir.
Mr. McDaniel's?
Yes.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Resolution 205-24 is passed. On to new business. Resolution 206-24, can I get motion to read by title number?
So moved, second.
Resolution 206-24, a resolution delineating overlays in relation to the proposed London Gateway Incentive Districts A through S within the City of London, Ohio, and adopting a written economic plan as to the same, setting the time and place of a public hearing and authorizing and ratifying the giving of notice to the City of, to the London City School District, the Tolles Career and Technical Center, and the Board of County Commissioners of Mass County, Ohio, all pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code Sections 5709.40(c) and its related rules and laws, and declaring an emergency.
Okay, the one person that had a good handle on this is not here. So there's a lot in this, I don't think I can accurately explain enough to give a thorough explanation. The Law Director's emailed a summary sheet to council members, since this is council's first look at this and the next four pieces, I would ask that the Law Director be present to explain this in greater detail to council. Not everybody's had the chance to hear the explanation, not everybody's at finance. I do have a question on one of the pieces that I'll have to bring up with her, and maybe the administration can answer this. In, in this legislation, it mentions the city engineer. Well, who is the city engineer? How does this council get a report from the city engineer that explains in detail that the existing public infrastructure is sufficient to support this, which is what it states in this, and that the economic development plan's been examined and approved? The economic development plan also includes reference to Phase 2, which will include 288 homes in an interconnected area to be named later. I personally would like to see that area be defined. Does additional, it just brings up the question, does additional property need to be annexed to the city later, and does the planning commission have to approve a plan that's to be brought later? Those are questions that I had when I read this the other night. But my question, big question is, it's about the city engineer, do we have to contract someone? Is there a bid process to do that? If you would, please. You done? I started to say something, and you kept going, I didn't want to stop. That's okay, I just. We, the, currently, the city contracts with a firm called Choice One Engineering. They act on behalf of the city as our city engineer, as we do not have enough work to full-time employ one, so we contract it out. They do such things as plan review, review any kind of work that we need to be done here in the city, and in this case, they'll be listed as the engineer for this. So they will be given the information, and they'll report back. And yes, we can share that with council once we get that report back, if you wish. Right now, they just give the reports because they're primarily doing plan reviews and stuff. It goes back to building and zoning, and back to the, the company that's doing the construction, or the development company, so that they can address the concerns that they have. So, well, thank you for the clarification. I thought Choice One, I mean, just when I've heard their name in the past, it's basically been for the Third Ward and, Third Ward and/or stormwater projects that they looked at. I didn't realize we had them on retainer for everything else. I thought that was a, an ad needed basis. Yeah. They've, they've been at, been that for two or three years now. Okay, thank you.
Has everyone had time to read the email from Jennifer from Monday, December 2nd? So there, there was a request to suspend the three reading rules just on 206-24. This will allow the city to proceed with sending out the required notices and scheduling the public hearing. This does not otherwise obligate the city to approve either TIF. So, 206 is just to start notifying people, notifying the schools, notifying the public, So, 206 is just to start notifying people, notifying the schools, notifying the public, getting that process started. It does not obligate us at all to the TIF itself. That would be the other pieces of legislation, the next four. And that is required by law to get that process started.
The three reading suspension is required by law or all of those other things that we need to send out?
We have to pass this one.
To get the process started, just to start getting the public hearing stuff out. Because, I don't know, I mean, it's a lot, but if you guys read it, you know, it's just, let's see, authorizing, ratifying, giving notice to London City School District, Toll's Technical, the Board of County Commissioners of Massa County, all pursuant to Ohio Revised So, the first piece, they're asking that that be suspended and passed just so they could get the process started of getting all these notifications out. But it does not obligate us to pass the TIF.
So, can I ask the obvious question of, do we want to do this? Because, basically, I mean, you're kind of asking us to go ahead and approve and start the process of something that I'm not sure we even want to do because I don't know enough about it. So, that's a little.
Well, at any time, you're more than, you're more than welcome to call myself, call the auditor, call the law director, and if you have questions on it. I'm just passing along, Jennifer's not here, and I'm passing along what her email said. You know, if Wes would like to add anything to this, I know he's here on the, on the side of the developer. He's more welcome if council, council president doesn't mind. I'm just passing along what the email said because I'm just making sure that you all saw the email from Monday, December 2nd.
Well, I'm with you, Michael. It's like, pass it to see what's in it, you know?
Well, I don't think it's passing it to see what's in it. What I think it is, is, you know, if we start the process and we don't like it, you've already sent out those notices, you know, we decided to. First of all, I, I think this is a area that we've never been in before, right? We've never done a TIF, we've never done an NCA.
Well, we've done TIPS.
We've done TIPS.
But we've not done a residential TIF, I don't believe.
Right. So, it's new, right?
A residential TIF would be new.
It would be.
And we've never done an NCA.
So, you know, and I, you know, we just got these Mondays. Here's, here's one of them. This is 209. It's about 156 pages, which I did go through. I went through about 120 some of them, because some of it's.
A little light reading.
Yeah, a little light reading. And I'm not sure that, I'm not sure I like some of the, I don't, there's some of the percentages in there that I don't like. You know, I, are you able to speak on the developer's behalf, Mr. Wes?
Rex.
I just want to address one thing on 206-24. Let me kind of relate this to anything else that requires a public hearing, of which these following pieces of legislation does. It's in common practice for council to go ahead and put up and schedule for a public hearing and get the notices out. It's because the state regulates how these TIFs are done, they require us to get passage to do the publications. They just require that, you know, otherwise, if they didn't require it, we would be going ahead and scheduling public hearings and stuff. It doesn't mean we're going to pass the following legislation. So, it's just, you know, regulation. There'll be some other things in there, you'll see that it's just kind of quirky regulations that the state has in the way they do these TIFs. So, I just wanted to pass that along. I hope that helped instead of like last council, and I didn't help with something.
Wes, do you mind coming up here and explaining a little bit, please?
Wes Smith, I act as the owners' representative for the owners and the developers. So, I mean, Mayor Klosser and Rex hit it spot on. So, with these different, what I'll call, economic incentive packages, there are certain steps that you have to take to at least open it up for discussion, right? So, the first resolution is essentially just opening up the discussion, right? To be able to get to those public hearings, to have those, you know, those advanced discussions with everyone. This is more of a formality piece. Again, this is not approving any residential TIF. This is simply getting the notifications out, simply opening up the process.
What should we have to do by law, anyway?
Correct. By the ORC, Ohio Revised Code.
206 allows us to notify those different, or schools.
The schools.
But it also divides up the TIF area into different districts.
It, it doesn't divide it up. It defines the area.
Okay.
So, basically, it says, this is the area for which this TIF would encompass.
And that's to sort of not start that TIF until development begins in that particular area.
Well, we can't start a TIF until it gets approved, right?
So, I mean, this one has to do with the overlayments also.
Yeah. So, so what this, what this, this resolution does, it does a couple of things. It says, okay, this is the TIF area, right? This is the defined boundaries for this, okay? And then, it sets the process for opening up the public hearings to get the process jump-starting and notifying the different entities that need to be notified. So, it's saying, here it is, it's encompassing, this is the property it covers, okay? Then, we'll notify the appropriate agencies per Ohio Revised Code to open up those, those public hearings. Yeah. I mean, again, it's, unfortunately, the Ohio Revised Code is kind of archaic when it comes to some of these ordinances, and the processes are very, very quirky. And if you haven't gone through the process before, it's like, why are we doing these certain things? Why don't we just put it into one resolution and go this way? But there's different steps you have to take to even get to that opening stage, if that makes sense.
So, can you explain to me why the, why there's an importance to suspend the three reading rules instead of the normal procedure that we would do on any other thing like this?
Again, for this, it's defining the area, right? So, you want to get the area defined, right? You want to get the notices out to those different entities to make them aware that the council is having these discussions, right, for that input? And then, again, setting the stage for the actual discussions on the TIF, the TIF ordinance itself.
See, let's look at 207.
Can I, I just wanted to add one thing, Mr. Norman, if that's okay?
Okay.
So, say, for example, you guys go, no, we're going to leave 206 on for three readings. So, then, that's three readings, so that's a month and a half before, before the notifications can go out.
Right.
Then, the notifications go out, then all these other things are backed up a month or a month and a half or two months. That's what they're saying. So, this is just defining it and putting the notifications out, just defining the area. So, it'll just slow the process down, and then, like I would assume 207 would then be on for six, six, eight readings?
Not if we table it.
So, if we're looking at 206, or 206-24, and you go down 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, to the eighth, whereas, it says, "This council has determined it is necessary and appropriate in the best interests of the city to adopt the written economic development plan for London Gateway Incentive Districts, a copy of which is Exhibit B." So, if I'm reading that right, it's saying that we have determined that it's necessary to do this and that it's in the best interest of the city, which, again, I go back to 207, 208, 209. Those, that is the process. So, how do I know that this is what is best for the city if I haven't went through all the rest of it? Because that is what 206 says, that I, as council, have determined that it's necessary and appropriate for the best interests of the city, and I'm not quite sure a TIF or an NCA is what's best for the city at this point. Because I don't truly understand everything that's in here.
Do you mind explaining the residential TIF?
Yeah, absolutely. So, so, the tax and criminal financing district is basically a economic development tool that a lot of the growing communities in central Ohio utilize, okay? So, for instance, in Franklin County alone, there's over 26,000 single-family lots that have residential TIFs over top of them, okay? And I'm going to get, I got it right here. So, I want to make sure that, do you have that map that I sent that you can pull up, or no? Okay.
Which maps are you, we have maps on here.
Here.
Yeah.
Here we have.
Yeah, that map right there. So, that, that map right there encompasses.
I don't have that map.
It's on.
We have it last meeting.
It should be on your report. Matt sent it.
All right, go ahead. Keep going. I can listen and look.
Yeah, so that map encompasses just over 1,000 acres that is within the City of London city limits, okay? So, that is the former MTB land that was purchased, that has just sat there since 1985 and longer, right? I think MTB took it over in 1985, somewhere around there, okay? So, there's three different tools that are being proposed for that land, okay? So, and they're all economic development tools. First tool is the residential TIF, okay? So, what the residential TIF does is it would put a tax and criminal finance district over top of the residential land within that 1,000 acres. So, there is a roughly, the Johnson's Creek, which this council previously approved, the 870, I think it's 872, single-family lots.
And that's, and that's this area here, right?
That's that parcel right there, yep. And then, right at, right at the intersection of Betty Wilson Road and US 42, there's approximately 110-acre parcel right there. About 90 acres of that covers the residential TIF, okay? So, 90 acres of that, 110 acres right there. That's the only two parcels that have the residential TIF over top of it, okay? So, what a residential TIF does, it takes the revenues and puts it into a TIF fund, okay? That TIF fund is utilized for public infrastructure improvements to improve the area. So, so that's one tool, right? A commercial TIF is very similar to that. So, let me back up. The residential TIF, it's a non-school TIF. So, the school district, essentially, every dollar that the school district would get, the school district still gets. Because in, in the residential areas, you're generating kids, you want to make sure that you're taking care of those kids, right? You want to make sure that those kids are getting paid for, and the schools are being made whole, okay? So, it's taking that portion, giving it to the schools, and then taking the other portion and putting it to that TIF fund. So, let me clarify that, number one, all right? Then, you have the, the commercial TIF, which covers the balance of that land for commercial development, you know, whether it's a retail strip or a business, a commercial type of development, okay? And takes those funds and, again, puts it into that TIF fund, okay? And is utilized for public infrastructure, okay? And then, the third economic development tool is an NCA, a new community authority, all right? So, what an NCA does is essentially adds an additional millage to that 1,000 acres that's on that map, okay? So, and it adds a 10-mill charge to the people or their owners within that 1,000 acres only. Does not affect any other resident or anything of that nature for the community, all right? So, the goals of these three different economic development tools is essentially, as development comes in, okay, the burden of the new public infrastructure that needs to be constructed is put on the onus of the property owners or residents within that 1,000 acres, right? So, you know, to, as far as, like, the goals you're putting in, you're putting in that infrastructure, you're bringing in that new economic development that comes along with it, and you want to attract that high-quality housing, right? High-quality development, whether it's high-quality housing, whether it's commercial development, or whether it's jobs, right? So, if I'm, if I'm a business owner, or if I'm a CEO of a company, I have, you know, if I have a company that is bringing 100 jobs or 1,000 jobs, okay, and I'm looking at land in different communities, all right? I'm looking for different things that are in place. I'm looking for zoning. I'm looking for, to make sure that there's zoning in place, because usually, these large companies, they don't want to have to come in and deal with the zoning of land, right? They'll go to communities that have zoning in place, that, that's what, that's what attracts them, okay? They'll look for infrastructure. They'll look, okay, are there roadway, is the roadway network in place? Are the utilities in place? Those are other things that a CEO might be looking for, okay? The other thing they're looking for is, where are my workers coming from, okay? Where, where are the people that are going to support the jobs that I bring in, okay? So, all these, all these factors that we are, that these companies are looking for, all play a role into essentially bringing in the high, the high-quality development, okay? You know, with, with this MTB land, you have good zoning in place, okay? The needs are really the infrastructure. There is no infrastructure in place. We need to extend Eagleton Boulevard from 42 to 142. That is a significant financial burden on any developer, and that's one of the reasons why that land is set there for so long, right? Because there's those infrastructure needs that have to get put in place. So, these economic incentive packages that are being put in, or economic incentives that are being put in, help pay for things like that to attract those businesses, to attract those residents to come into these areas, if that makes sense. So, that's like a very, very high level of what we're doing. But I think the, the most important thing, you know, when you're thinking about this 1,000 acres, is, you know, what, what has the city lost over the last 30 years? We've lost by that land not developing. I mean, there is significant income tax that will come from these properties, significant income tax. Because if you think about it, the city gets, yeah, you get real estate taxes, but it's a very small portion. I think it's somewhere around 12% that the city gets from the, you know, the millage. So, it's very, very small. So, the income tax is what is the big win for the city in this situation, okay? And we can get into all the details of what that income tax brings, but I know just, just off of the knowns for Johnson's Creek itself, Johnson's Creek in itself, like, you know, when I run, when I ran my income tax analysis with, with Ricken Grayton, you know, I know today, the City of London, the average household income is around $58,000, okay? Now, I know at London Landing, the new development that came in, the average income, the average household income is around $114,783, okay? A significant increase in household income. What's that mean? That, that means a significant increase in income tax for the city, okay? So, for just Johnson's Creek, just the 260 acres that we're talking about here, okay? Just Johnson's Creek, 306 of those houses are in contract with DRH, okay? That average home price will be somewhere around $450,000 a year, okay? So, what does that mean from an average household income? For an average household income for a $450,000 house, to get that unwritten, underwritten and get financing from a bank, you're looking at an average household income of $135,000, okay? Again, that translates into income tax. For the other builder within Johnson's Creek, the average home price, the average sale price for that will be $600,000, okay? What does that mean from an average household income? An average household income will be roughly $180,000, again, to underwrite and to be able to finance and get a mortgage for that house, okay? And, and we've seen that, again, play out in London Landing, okay? So, again, what does all that mean? What does all that mean? So, when you look at those average household incomes, when you look at the income tax revenue that will come in upon full build-out of all the Johnson's Creek, the 872 lots, that's roughly $2.1 million a year that comes in the door for the city, just in income tax, just in income tax. I mean, that's a pretty significant revenue stream, just 260 acres of the 1,000 acres, okay? The schools, because the schools has, have an income tax as well. The schools will get roughly $1.4 million from the income tax, from the residents within that 260 acres, okay? So, it really, everything that we're doing with these economic incentive packages, that's the goal that comes from it. That, that is the benefit to the city, right? I know off of that 1,000 acres, that 1,016 acres, all taxing entities today get $33,000 a year off of that 1,000 acres, all taxing entities. Of that $33,000, the city gets roughly $4,000. So, everything that we're doing here to get this public infrastructure in, you know, because I think we all know that, you know, to put a road in from Eagleton, you know, to extend Eagleton from 42 to 142, that's something that's probably not in the budget for the city right now, right? To attract that high-quality business, right? So, that's where the developer steps in to put in that public infrastructure. So that's where the developer steps in, to put in that public infrastructure, attract those high-quality business, attract those residents to boost the income tax that comes through the city, okay? So I know that probably, I probably took your question and maybe expanded that a little too much, but that's what we had, that's the conversation that we had with the Finance Committee, I don't know, a couple weeks ago.
Well, the TIF is to pay back the developer.
For that public, so basically, the developer is acting as the bank for that public infrastructure that needs to come in to support that business, right? That way, that burden is not on the community, it's on developer.
Yeah, for the residential, that doesn't affect the schools.
The residential does not affect the schools whatsoever. And for the commercial TIF, the commercial property generates no students, right? So there's no, there's no impact to the schools in that situation.
And that TIF also would help pay back the developer for infrastructure-type of costs?
Correct. Public infrastructure, yep. Whether it's roads, water, sewer, improvements to 42 that would be needed, improvements to 38 that may be needed, improvements to 142, I mean, there's a lot of public infrastructure work that wouldn't be, that will be needed to, again, bringing, bring those high-quality businesses in. Because if I'm a high-quality business user, and I go out there and look at that 1,000 acres right now, no public infrastructure in, I move on to the next community. Because that's just how they think, unfortunately. It's, that's too much of a putt. I'm going to go to these other communities because they have the public, they have the roads in, they have the zoning in, they have the water and sewer in.
One of the other things we talked about in Finance was the NCA, and 80% would go towards paying back the developer, and then 20% could go towards some type of our safety services, I guess is what it was.
Yeah, absolutely. That was something that we thought would be another added benefit to the city in that situation. So with the TIF, both of those TIFs that get put in place, once that public infrastructure is paid back, then those TIF funds then go to the city.
The full amount?
The full amount, after that public infrastructure gets paid for. And then with the NCA, every dollar that comes in, 80% goes to the developer to help pay off that public infrastructure, 20% goes to the city, and then, once the public infrastructure's paid off, 100% of that goes to the city.
So the 20% could go towards police and fire operations?
Police, fire, operations, whatever the new community authority, whatever the authority decides upon. And that board for that authority is made up of four city members. Four city members and then three members of the developer.
I think I missed part of that. You said what the board decides on, which is what? I missed that.
Where those funds get directed.
Oh, okay, okay.
That Betty Wilson 42 area, is that going to be single-family homes?
So the Betty Wilson 42, it should be the north, yeah, the, it's kind of weird, it's like the north, north of 42, right? West of Betty Wilson, what I would call it. So the front, plus or minus 20 to 25 acres is set to be commercial, and then the back half, there is a residential user.
Is it going to be a single-family back in there or a part?
Right now, we're having discussions with a single-family user that's age-targeted.
Okay. So I think 206 deals with the overlayments, right?
Yeah, so basically, 206, basically, again, just defines those areas. This is the area that this TIF covers.
So the, the different TIF areas would only kick in when those begin to be developed?
Well, it would only kick in if the council were to approve, right? And then, development has to occur for those TIF revenues to start flowing.
Is that the purpose of the overlayments, is to not have TIF funds kick in until that particular area starts getting developed?
Say it again, I'm sorry.
The, like District, or Area A, if that's the first to be developed, that would, a TIF would go from the beginning of the development in that area?
Yeah, so the reason you-
For 30 years.
Yeah, so the reason that you don't, you separate, you divide up that TIF district is because if it was just one big TIF district, that TIF only has a 30-year lifespan, right? So it's a 30-year, non-school TIF. So if it was just one big district, once an improvement went on, one piece of that land, the TIF would then kick for the entire property. Whereas if we break it down into different districts within that boundary, we can say, okay, within District A, okay, that portion has kicked off. That reserves the years for the remaining districts B through S.
So whenever each area begins, the 30 years would be after that development begins in that particular area?
Correct. You're spot on.
You could have-
Okay, so, kind of walk me through this. So here's my understanding. So without the TIF or the NCA, as a developer, you would take a piece of property, you'd build the roads and the infrastructure, then you'd build the homes, and then you'd sell the homes to cover the cost of doing that and make a profit, correct?
Say it again.
Okay, so without the TIF and without the NCA, if we didn't do this, and a developer has a piece of property, they would buy the piece of property, or you already have it, you would add the roads and infrastructure yourself, then you'd build the homes, then you'd sell the homes, and the cost of doing, and the cost of selling those homes would cover the cost of doing all that, plus you'd make a profit. Is that correct?
So-
As a developer.
I'm trying to understand. So you're saying, as you sell homes, right, there-
I'm saying, as a developer, let's just say that corner you're talking about, Betty Wilson Road, you're the developer, you own it. If we don't do a TIF or a NCA, and you develop it, you would build the roads and the infrastructure, then you'd build the homes, and then you'd sell those homes to cover the cost of the infrastructure and the home building, plus make a profit.
Wouldn't be, in that situation, we would probably have to work with different builders because we wouldn't be able to bring the high-quality housing.
The developer would have to work with different builders.
Correct. It wouldn't be the high-quality builders that you're looking for, in my opinion, within the city, to, again, increase that income tax volume. So the home values would be much lower, and the income tax would be, wouldn't be-
But that is exactly what London Landing is right now.
I was going to say, we've just-
Right, London Landing, there's no TIF.
Right.
So-
I understand that.
So that's being developed, paid for by the developer, that price comes in the house, is that right? I mean, they build that price in.
If there was, if there were a TIF on that, the city would get 20%.
Well, I'm going to ask, there's a part two to this.
Not on the TIF, it's 20% on the NCA, that's different.
So, but, am I correct in saying that without the TIF, without the NCA, you still build the infrastructure, you still build the roads, you still build the homes, you sell them, and it covers the cost of doing all that, plus you still make a profit? Is that a correct statement?
It depends on the builder in that situation.
Because no one's not, you're not going to sell a house at a loss, right?
We're not going to sell a lot at a loss, exactly, exactly. So that's what, especially, again, when you're Johnson, so, I wish Paul was here for this. I mean, so if you, so if you look at the Butcher Block and Sovereign Village, okay? No one expected the Butcher Block or Sovereign Village to be in the city of London, right? There has been, that was a significant development, that was a beautiful development, a very high-quality development in that situation, right? That had economic incentives associated with that one, right? And what the developer is envisioning for Johnson's Creek and for this 1,000 acres is something extremely special for the city of London, where someone is coming down 38 to go to a football game and says, "Holy crap, what is happening in London?" That's our expectations for Johnson's Creek and for this 1,000 acres.
As a developer?
As a developer. To make this something that's special.
Okay, so the second part of my question is, with the TIF, here's how I read it to work. As a developer, you're going to take that piece of property, you're going to build the roads and infrastructure, you're going to build the homes, you're going to sell the homes for the same price as you would-
We don't build the homes.
Someone's going to build the homes, they're going to sell them at the same price as they would have before. They're going to make a profit, but now you have the TIF in place, so on top of making that original profit, aren't we, because-
Yeah, but that, those TIF proceeds go not just to that property, it goes within the district for improvements to 38, to improvements to 42, to improvements for Eagleton Extension. All those things are associated with that. So do I think that that public infrastructure can be done without a TIF? To answer your question, which I think is what you're getting at, is no. I don't think you get Eagleton Boulevard extended from 42 to 142 without that TIF in place, without that NCA in place. There, it makes zero economic sense to put that public infrastructure in, there's no way to do that deal. It won't work, period. I think that's what, maybe I didn't understand what you're asking.
No.
That's what that, that's what that TIF does. It puts that into a public infrastructure fund to pay for roadway improvements such as Eagleton Boulevard, such as many other roadways within that 1,000 acres that need to be, that need to be improved. Now, I mean, if the city wants to partner, right, and put up the funds to put in that public infrastructure, we're open to that 100%.
Could I add something? So, another thing is, is that, one thing a TIF will do, it also speeds up the process, right? So they're able to tackle more projects because they know that that infrastructure's going, instead of being completely right out of their pocket, they're going to see something coming back in, right? If you guys, I don't know who was around for the Butcher Block project, but if you remember, that project was around and then it died because there was somebody in another entity that didn't want to give a tax abatement. And then, they figured out, okay, we should probably do this because if you looked and saw what property tax is coming off of those empty, that empty land right now, it is nothing, almost.
$33,000 per year.
Because it's CAUV, it's put under CAUV, right? So it's good, it's sitting there doing nothing. So it's not like we're losing anything, right? If we do this, it's not like we're losing anything. Actually, we'll be gaining a lot, like you talked about, the income tax, the ability to connect 42 and 142, which you guys know about the prices of roads and what something like that would cost to put another quote-unquote Kenny Boulevard from 42 to 142 because it's a bigger section. So that's just a couple things that I wanted to add in there. And who knows? Who knows if they would do all the projects that they're planning to do if there wasn't a TIF in place because financially, it just doesn't make sense for them.
I can tell you, the projects that we want to do wouldn't be feasible whatsoever. And again, tonight is not a decision on the TIF, it's not a decision on the NCA, it's just opening up the discussion to have, I mean, these are all great questions, Councilman, all great questions. And it just opens the discussion to further the conversation more.
That's all I got. Thank you, thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely.
I appreciate your explanation.
You could, got a real quick question.
Yeah.
You could have several of these going, like Betty Wilson Road, I think that was, if I remember them, M-N-O-C-Q or something like that. You could have, you could be working there, plus you could be working someplace else simultaneously, so you could be, you could have-
We will, we will be working in multiple places simultaneously.
Okay.
Absolutely. Johnson's Creek, that, again, those income tax numbers that are read off, that was just for 260 acres for Johnson's Creek, just for that.
I do have one more question, sorry. You made me think of it. So, are we retroing back with the Johnson's Creek? What's been, so when we approved this, the stuff that's already been built in Johnson's Creek, because it is part of it, are you, it's not-
No.
Nothing in Johnson's.
Or London Landing, I'm sorry.
Yeah, London Landing's not involved in-
Not involved at all?
It's not, no.
Okay, because I didn't get that, I didn't get that sheet.
Yeah, it's not, the NCA or the TIF is not over London Landing whatsoever.
So it's just Johnson Creek on around that top curve?
Exactly. The undeveloped, right now, the land that just sits there, that was the former MTB land, that's just sitting there as common land.
Okay, all right, thank you. I'm done for real this time.
Councilman Hayes, I don't know if I answered your question, or if you, did I answer your question?
Yeah, got you. I appreciate you.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for answering the questions and not just saying suspend it because, so, appreciate that.
I move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel's?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Mr. Norman?
No.
Mr. Stahl?
Okay, Resolution 206-24 will stay on. On to Ordinance 207-24, can I get a motion to read by title and number?
So move second.
Ordinance number 20724, ordinance creating 19 incentive districts and declaring improvements to certain real property within the incentive districts to be of public purpose and exempt from real property taxation, identifying certain public infrastructure improvements that once made will benefit or serve the parcels in the incentive districts, requiring the owners of those parcels to make service payments in lieu of taxes establishing an incentive district, public improvement, tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of such service payments, authorizing payments to the London City School District and tolls career and technical centers, and approving and authorizing the execution and delivery of a tax increment financing agreement with Tomcat LLC.
So again, Shannon Trainor's not here, I don't know that I can explain this accurately enough. Hopefully, the law director comes to the next meeting so we can ask additional questions. In the meantime, you know, if you have questions, I would suggest that you email them to her, call her, and let her do the research and be prepared, if she comes to the next meeting, to more accurately answer these questions. This piece is already, we already know there's going to be a public meeting, we're not going to, or a public hearing, we're not going to do anything with this tonight anyway.
We'll have to move the public hearing.
Yeah, I was going to say, that's what I was getting at, so the public hearing we have on this agenda, that won't be January 16.
It still can be, you don't have to wait till your third meeting, do you? I don't, I'm thinking, if we didn't pass 206, I don't think we can schedule a public hearing.
Right, we can, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, there's no public hearing until January 16.
Really? We can't schedule a public meeting for a date other than the third council meeting?
We have to have 206.
Okay. Okay.
We have to pass 206 first before we have a public hearing.
Okay.
For the rest of it. So once 206 is passed, then we can schedule the public hearing. Okay, on to Ordinance 208-24, can I get a motion to read by title and number?
So move second.
Ordinance 20824, authorizing the city of London, Ohio to accept title to certain real property located within the city and immediately transfer title back to the current owner for the purpose of implementing tax increment financing pursuant to Ohio Vice Code Section 5709.41, and dispensing with the requirement that this resolution must be read on three different days pursuant to Ohio Vice Code Section 731.17A.
Once again, Andy, if you want to take it, you can, since all three of our names are on this. I just don't think I can explain it well enough.
I don't know if I understand exactly, but my understanding is that the ORC requires transfer property to the city and then transfer from the city back because in order to have a TIF, you have to show city ownership at some point? Is that it?
That's another one of the quirky parks of doing a TIF, just like two oh six was a quirky part, where you can't do a public hearing without you guys' approval.
So it would just be transferred then right back?
That would transfer it to us, and then we turn around and transfer it back, just as long as our name is affiliated with those properties.
Just to meet the ORC requirements?
Yep.
Okay, on to ordinance two oh nine dash twenty-four, can I get a motion to read by title and number?
So move second.
Ordinance two oh nine two four, declaring the improvement of certain real property located in the city of London, Madison County, Ohio, to be a public purpose pursuant to Ohio Vice Code Section five seven zero nine point four one, declaring such property to be exempt from real property taxation, designating improvements that once made will directly benefit the parcels for which improvement is declared to be a public purpose, requiring annual service payments in lieu of taxes, establishing an urban redevelopment tax increment equivalent fund, authorizing the execution of a tax increment financing TIF agreement and providing related authorizations pursuant to Ohio Vice Code Sections five seven oh nine four one, four two, four three, eight three two, and eight five.
I believe this would be the commercial TIF. But again, I'll defer to you, Andy, if you want to discuss it, or wait for the law director to-
Is this two oh nine?
Yeah.
Is this the TIF? Is this the NCA TIF? This is the commercial TIF?
Yep, I believe so.
That's about all I know about it.
It's an agreement between the city and Tomcat.
So, any TIF funds would go to the developer to pay them back, and then this doesn't affect the schools because students don't come from commercial-type businesses, is what you explained.
Okay, on to Resolution two ten dash twenty-four, can I get a motion to read by title and number?
So move second.
Resolution two ten two four, a resolution determining that a petition to establish the London Gateway New Community Authority is sufficient and complies with the requirements of Section three four nine point zero three of the Ohio Vice Code, in form and substance, setting the time and place for a hearing on the petition and authorizing the notice by publication of such hearing.
So the new community authority's never happened in Madison County, it's a whole new way to do things. As Les mentioned earlier, there would be millage. I can't find, does anybody know what page this starts on in our two hundred and eighty-four document, two hundred and eighty-four-page document? I didn't think that that had been determined on the millage yet. It's up to ten mills, but I don't know if that's been determined and put in here. And I would think, I think that's approved by council before, is that part of that? Millage, the millage is going to be determined. Is that determined and put in this document and accepted by council as part of the deal? Or is that left up to the NCA, once it's formed? But we don't know exactly what that is yet.
The NCA-
Okay, the NCA board, they're the ones that determine the millage up to the ten mills. And then, you've, not everyone's seen this. Your breakdown of the income for Johnson's Creek, not everyone's seen that. I'm sure everyone would like to see that. Also, if, if you know what the, the NCA of ten mills, what's that going to generate? Because that's the twenty-six percent that comes to the city right now. So I don't know what that generates, I don't know what that's expected to generate. But you're providing this other information, so if you have that at some point before the next meeting, it'd be great. You know, before we move on with this, to know what we're expecting to see out of the NCA of the twenty percent that's going to come to the city for safety forces.
Across that thousand acres.
Right. Correct. Right. Okay, I'm just, I was curious what that would be.
And again, we won't know a public hearing until two oh six dash twenty-four is passed.
I have a question. Can we, Derek, since we haven't adjourned, can we revisit Resolution two oh six twenty-four?
Yes.
Let's do that. Can I make a motion to reconsider? Thank you.
Second.
Two oh six two four.
Mr. McDaniel's?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Do you have further discussion?
Well-
Sorry, Mr. President, I'm confused, so I-
I mean, like I said, this is, this is, this is new territory for most of us up here. I mean, I know, Rich, you've been through it at least once with, and Josh, you probably went through it too. But for the rest of it, it's, it's new.
The residential TIF and the NCA TIF, or NCA-
Are new for us.
For everybody.
Forever.
I mean, it's-
That's what I'm saying, so it's new. So, so we're kind of, I kind of feel we're at the mercy of the developer here in kind of leading us through this, and-
I mean, it's actually, I think it's a blessing to have a developer like this investing all this money in our community, like finding these incentives for, for the city of London.
I, and I, you know, let's play devil's advocate here a little bit. You know, if the developer's bringing everything to us, the developer's in it for the money. And I know he's also in it to create better, I'm not trying to throw darts or anything. But when the bottom line comes down to it, they're in it for the money. And they want to make money, and that's what it's about. You don't, you don't go into something like this without that. So, I'm a little hesitant to jump on, jump on this without us having someone look over all of this for the benefit of the city. Go ahead.
I didn't want to interrupt you, but, but when you said, and I understand, did the developer bring this to us? Absolutely, it was their idea, and that's when the discussion started. But I don't want to act like the city as a whole was kind of going into this blind. Have you guys done one of these? No. Have I done one? No. Has, no. But we do have a law director, right, and she has gone through all those pages because she was talking about how much fun it was to read through all of them. So that, we do have people on our side that do understand it and that have gone through it, and, you know, and also, another good person would be David Kell, if you have time to reach out to David Kell. That guy is, has always been like a sounding board for me when I have questions about, you know, especially when we were doing something new that we did downtown, right, with Westwood. We had never done that where we gave CRAs but only on the improvements, right? And so I talk to him a lot about that. He is kind of a guru and kind of understands it, and he has, you know, no skin in the game, right? He's with the county, so he has no skin in the game. That'd be a great person to reach out to also, just, just offering that up, and I know, and if you want me to set something up, we could all sit down together. Or, yeah, or call another community that has them.
Right, so, I would like to see, and I would feel better, is if we, is if we had an independent council look at this, not just for the legalities like ours has done, our, our legal, our law director has done. She's looked at it for the legalities to make sure everything's legal. But I, I have to question, you know, the original that was, that was brought to the finance committee, it didn't even have any designated funds for the city in it, right? So had the finance committee not looked through that and caught that, we would be looking at a totally different document here, and that document wouldn't have that twenty percent in there. Because it was missed somehow, right? So, if we have a independent council come in and look at this on our behalf and represent us, and we can counteroffer with the developers, I just, but, that's, that's another, that's another time. I will make a motion that we suspend the three reading rules and pass this, just to get the process going.
A second.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel's?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
All right, Resolution two oh six dash twenty-four is passed.
Suspended.
Has suspended, yes.
Motion to adopt.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel's?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Now Resolution two oh six dash twenty-four is passed.
Now, do we have to go back to two oh seven to reconsider? Okay, thank you.
So now, yeah, so now we'll go ahead, schedule the public hearing for January sixteen.
You got that, clerk?
All right.
Okay, on to roundtable. First off, thank you, Brent, thank you, Michael, for reconsidering both those resolutions tonight.
Amen.
To get those through. And Les, thank you for coming tonight, explaining things. Michael, I'll start with you, roundtable.
Well, like I, like I said, I'd really like to see another set of eyes on this that would look at it, not just for the legalities to make sure it's legally okay.